I'd like to call to order the City of Bothell Planning Commission meeting. Tonight is Wednesday, May 15, 2019 at 6:00 PM. All Commissioners are present with the exceptions of Commissioners Moreau Cook, Kiernan, and Paistrip who are absent and excused. There's no audience, so there are no non-agenda public comments. And with that, Commissioners should have had time to read the minutes, so I'll take a motion to approve the minutes in a second.
Yeah, I have one question about the minutes. For staff present, Steve Markala was here in the audience, and he also spoke, so I don't know if that should be noted on there or not. So with that amendment, I move to approve the minutes from May 1, 2019.
I second it.
All those in favor say aye. 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 And motion carries with Commissioners Moreau Cook, Kiernan, and Paistrip absent and excused. With that, we will move into new business. Actually, we're gonna actually, we'll probably hold off on that because I believe that our council liaison, Deputy Mayor Duer is on her way. I'm not sure if she has any reports on that, so we can come back to that if that's okay. No public hearing this evening, and with that, we'll go ahead and start with the first study session, 2019 Housekeeping Code Amendments briefing, and will be led by Senior Planner Bruce Blackburn.
Good evening, everybody. Of course, this is our annual housekeeping code amendment process where we identify a number of those kind of things that you find in the code and you say, oh, that doesn't work very well, or some inconsistency, or just something that just is not clear. And basically, what we're doing tonight is, of course, no action is requested tonight. We're just gonna do a PC discussion and feedback and have a nice discussion about some of these things. There's 10 items in the 2019 docket, eight of which are scheduled for 2019, and I'm just gonna go right into those. The first of them is clarify whether planned unit development clustering provisions should be applied to multifamily residential zones. And basically, what we have is that the clustering provision in the planned unit development essentially identified, do you wanna hold for, okay, I wasn't sure if we wanted to go to the council liaison report or not.
I don't want to interrupt you.
Oh.
We just started.
We just started, so we can.
I think if I have this thing, so.
It's day 10, though.
So I guess with that, we will go ahead and, if it's okay, Chair of Public Affairs, we'll move back to the report from the council liaison. We are joined tonight by Deputy Mayor Davina Duer.
Thank you. Sorry I haven't been here lately. I have a conflict on Wednesday night, so I'm glad to be here, though. Did you review staff, did you review the legislative victories with the planning commission?
We briefly did last week at our last meeting, but.
Because I'm still doing a happy dance.
We can continue to talk about them, I think we should.
I don't remember what you said. I did watch the meeting, but, so basically, we had five priorities, and we got all five, so, woo. The first one being the 405 capacity expansions, and I don't know if you went over this, but it was about $600 million, and will give us an inline, inline stops at 522 and 527 for BRT and an additional lane northbound, right? I think it's northbound, and then I think we have to wait for a southbound lane, am I correct? Do you think it's both? Okay, oh, okay.
I believe it's both directions.
It's changed so many times, I don't always keep up.
From 522 to 527.
Okay, perfect. So anyway, that was probably the heaviest lift. We didn't think that that would happen. I would've put it at 60, 40, or however you do that, but the lower end odds. And Senator Palumbo was a big part in making that happen. The mayor and I went down on Saturday before the vote and testified. The, I think the hearing was at 8:00 in the morning, so we were on the road by 6:30, but it paid off, so. And then additionally, we got 1.5 million for downtown cleanup, which is cash, it's not matching, and then I think we got an additional 2 point, do you remember the number? 2.3 or something for matching from ecology for downtown cleanup as well. And then 400,000 for Canyon Park, 1.08 for the Bothell Landing Bridge, which we needed this year to, because we had federal funds to match, and then the police academy, which, of course, we have just a few police that we're trying to hire in the City of Bothell, so. So anyway, that was it. This was our first, at least my first time hiring a lobbyist, and, you know, there were some people who weren't sure whether it would be worth it, but I will say, I think the value in that was that they knew the critical times at which we needed to show up and make our voices heard, the hearings and whatnot, so I think for $50,000, we did okay on return on investment, so hopefully going forward, council will continue to do that. So, and then last night, we heard the shorelines, I don't know what we call it, master plan update, and I don't, we didn't really have any changes. Nobody really said anything, so, great job. And then the Canyon Park master plan update, we also saw last night, and we're super excited because that means Bruce is gonna stay with us for a while and not retire, and then.
We're gonna stretch that project out about five years.
Right, yeah, exactly. And then finally, I don't know, do you guys get the stream updates? We got an update on stream health in Bothell. I think it's worth, worth watching, the presentation, but it's fairly depressing, so good, though, to put in context as we move forward with Canyon Park and seeing what we can do to be more responsible moving forward, so we can have healthy streams come back to us, so I think with that, I'll let you carry on.
So if I could just piggyback on one thing, you mentioned about the lobbyist.
Yes.
So the other thing that was very helpful from a staff standpoint was that they tracked a lot of the legislation that we were interested in. Bruce is gonna talk about one of them tonight, House Bill 1923, that had, had some potentially very significant implications for cities and the planning that we would do. At one point, they had a lot of mandatory provisions in there, they ended up being optional for the most part, but it kept us informed because it was going through a lot of changes and gave us the opportunity to comment on that, and there was other legislation that they were tracking for us as well, in addition to the great work that they did on the five big items that we, the priorities that we had. That was, that was huge. That was a, that's like a grand slam with one more run added.
They said that they had never seen anything like it, they had never seen a city do that, and I mean, I think it's, the council worked really well together going down. I was down there, I think, five or six times, and Councilmember Agnew was down there, pretty much everyone was down there, so I think that makes a big difference. Gosh, there was something I wanted to mention, but I forgot, so I guess I'll let it go.
Well, to keep this sports metaphor going, for a city of this size, we were definitely punching above our weight.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think it was due, but yeah, the stars aligned for us, for sure. So are you, are you going to cover Canyon Park, what, some of the knowns now that we have with sound transit?
Virtually the same thing that you had last night.
Oh, well, perfect. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Duer. Those are certainly significant achievements, and we appreciate everything that the council did and the staff did to make that happen. Thanks for filling us in, thanks for being here. With that, let's go ahead and restart the study session with 2019 Housekeeping Code Amendments.
And of course, these are amendments that improve, clarify, and incorrect, correct deficiencies or inconsistencies, and first of all is, we've identified is clarify whether a development clustered provisions, where the city basically allows a development to cluster themselves to provide things like open space, and there's incentives that go along with that, basically increase lot numbers. And the question is, should those incentives be extended to multifamily residential zones? Right now, the code's really not clear. It's geared primarily to single-family residential lots. So we do have some potential approaches, and, you know, you could just simply extend the bonuses to multifamily residentials. You could say, no, we don't think multifamily should, residential development should have that bonus, or we can do different bonus unit incentives for multifamilies, such as an affordable housing provision. And that's one of the things that, you know, we've been thinking about, is we do this, this linkage between the increased density and whether we can justify the need for affordable housing, and of course, here, we would be actually be providing some additional units, and that is, it provides that nexus for us. So that is certainly one of the items that we could actually look for, and so we'd kinda like to hear from the commission as we kinda begin the discussion, whether that's something you'd like the staff to explore a little bit further. The second item is, of course, is there's a, we want to clarify the prohibition on rounding up of unit and lot yield numbers. Right now, we have a lot of folks come and say, well, I've got 8.9 lots, can I have nine? Or I have 12.7 lots, units, can I have 13? No, the code and the plan are very clear that that's not allowed. It has to be a whole number. So basically, what the approach would be able to, to make it very clear within the code, more than it is now, although I'm not sure how that could be, but we'll do the best we can, that it would not be allowed to do that rounding up provision, and that's a feature that we have within the regulations and the plan. Of course, the opposite would be, well, perhaps the city may want to consider rounding up, but we would have to do a plan amendment, because the plan's very clear, it has basically the same duplicative language within the plan as well as the code, so it would be a little bit more involved process to amend that. The third one is to amend a provision within Title 11, which is our administrative regulations, that give applicants 180 days to resubmit application requests from the city. Right now, the code says 90 days, and that's just flat, not enough. And 180 days also is in sync with our other permit style of resubmittal provisions. It's always 180 days. We try and give the applicants that much, particularly if we have a very complex project where they have to do a really extensive reassessment of a traffic study, or maybe a wetland study, or something like that. So we, we suggest 180 days, however, you can go more if you so desire, but we would like to keep it consistent with our other provisions. One of the other things that we want to do is to correct a, kind of a missed area within the code. Underneath a certain provision of the zoning code, there is a statement that says you have to count surface water facilities as a deduction from your lot area. And essentially, what we have is, we have in the City of Bothell what's called net buildable area, and that net buildable area is basically how we determine how many lots or dwellings a project is allowed to have. One of the things that we did back in, I think it was 2014, is, that far back, we removed that regulation to encourage low-impact development, because low-impact development, the better of those facilities are things that are like open ponds, large soils, detention retention ponds, and things like that. We didn't want, want to have some type of a disincentive to applicants from implementing those much preferred styles of low-impact development techniques. So the concept was to remove that prohibition, or that deduction, I should say, from the code. We just missed it in this particular section. It has been removed everywhere else except from this one. And of course, certainly, we changed the plan when we did that as well, so this is one that, it's almost like, okay, you have to do it this way, but we can talk a little bit more. One of the other items we have is that we have the North Creek Sub area, and it has what's called sub-districts, and there's a sub-district A and a sub-district B. And one of the things that we have learned is that the language within the code doesn't match with where the, the sub-district is. This is, of course, the North Creek Sub area, and North Creek, northeast 195th Street Sub area, I should say, and we described sub-district A, which is in blue, sub-district B, which is in green. We have a missing area. This is probably supposed to be sub-district B, but it's not identified within the code, so we need to basically either do one of two things, certainly add a map to the code, or just basically include this within the description of that particular sub-district. One of the things we want to do is that also, we've had some issues with our sign height. We have with monument signs within the City of Bothell where we have a maximum height, and it's six feet, and it's supposed to be measured from the grade, or the finished grade. We've been having some issues with people measuring the sign area itself, but not the height from the finished grade. Well, no, that's six feet, that's how high it is. No, it's not. It's that base foundation adds six, eight, 10 inches, whatever it should happen to be. So we believe the best approach would be to simply amend the sign code that very clearly identified that, the term we use is city-approved finished grade, that is a term we use throughout the code currently, that identifies, okay, exactly where that, that grade would be, and just make sure it's the entire sign structure that is measured, including the base or foundation. We could also insert a little illustration, and of course, I'm big on inserting illustrations, and where you basically just demonstrate clearly that there's your finished grade, six-foot maximum height, including the base or foundation. So that's an option we made, look, we may, I may throw that into the code for you guys to take a look at as well. The other one is that, in the City of Bothell, we have an interesting housing product called detached condominiums, and it's one of those things that was a really hot housing product for a while, and it went into a lot of our multifamily residential zones, particularly our, what's called the 5400A zone, and of course, that's a multifamily residential zone. It's not a great, a great level of density, however, we have a lot of these detached condominiums, and I'm gonna show you a little photo of those. They look just exactly like small lot, single-family. Same kind of a concept, you look at this and say, oh, well, that must be little lots here and there. The property itself is actually not owned by the land, the unit, oop, the unit owner. The unit owner actually buys a, my apologies, the unit owner actually buys a cube of land. That's how a condominium is basically established. They don't buy the piece of ground and then have their facility. So what we want to do is, we want to have a definition that very clearly identifies that this is a condominium, this style of housing is a condominium, because it does follow the provisions of the Condominium Act of the RCW, and we don't want there to be any confusion, and we have had this in the past about, well, isn't this a single-family lot? No, it's not a single-family lot, it is a condominium unit, therefore, you have to follow those provisions. And it gets a little bit technical, but we just want to basically have a very clear definition with our code to do that. One of the other elements that I think we'll have a lot more time to, we want to talk a little bit more time on, is that Title 11 defines a bunch of procedural requirements when we amend our code or our plan. And basically, what that does is it has, okay, it says, when you look at the transportation element, the planning commission will consult with this, or this, consult with that, you'll take a look at that, and then you have other title provisions within the regulations. I put them up here, they're really hard to see, but it's in your packet, but you can see how oftentimes you have planning commissions, shoreline board collaborate and make recommendations, and there's a whole wide range of items that are listed here. One of the things about this is that we created this list when we first did our, our first GMA compliant plan, and we did an awful lot of coordination between many different groups because it was the first time, everybody had a real interest in having a lot of discussions back and forth. That's not so much the case anymore. Anymore, we have pretty well-defined roles for our advisory bodies, as well as our council. So one of the things that I think that I would like the commission to give us the permission to do is take a look at this and see if there's a way that maybe we can tighten this up to be a little bit more efficient. One of the things that, I think that what happened when we did the shoreline master program, for example, is that we actually had to recreate that board because it was, it had not been in existence for a while. We probably have, will have a similar situation now, when, once they finish the master program work this year, and maybe a little bit next year, the board will probably go away until our next provision. However, if you look at this, well, if we did any type of a element amendment, we really do have to take care of the shoreline jurisdiction, the board, if its shoreline jurisdiction's involved, that becomes really quite problematic if we don't even have a board. So we would like the permission to take a look at this and maybe come up with some ways to really make this a little more efficient. Certainly, one of the things is that there's a lot of different titles, and this is development regulations, these are the development regulations, particularly titles involving utilities, transportation, buildings, construction. Those are items that, you know, the planning commission would make a recommendation on. Well, it's all technical stuff. There's not very much policy decisions within that. So we want to talk to the commission about the possibility of maybe making these items that go straight to the council, and again, we're talking about making things more efficient, particularly if you're gonna look at it and say, well, we'd like to make this change, however, well, it's a technical requirement, we really can't make those changes. We don't want to have a situation where you're looking at something and not having any policy decision discussions, which is really more appropriately done during the planning, comprehensive plan amendment timeframe. Now, Tom talked about House Bill 1921, which was signed by the governor today. Was it signed today? Or maybe yesterday? Oh, Monday, okay. So, interestingly enough, this provision's got some, oh, I misspelled something up there. That's what happens when I do these quickly. There's some interesting things within that regulation, and I think that I want to just identify a few of them. One is that we have to have protection of permanent protective housing.
Supportive.
Supportive, permanent, supportive housing, I'm sorry, yeah. And we want to make sure that we have a ability to put that into multifamily residential zones. That's one of the items that the legislature identified, is that we have to allow that within our multifamily residential zones, we can't have it exclusively. Now, permanent supportive housing basically is something where you have a special, unique support structure within a, a house, you know, whether it's, whether it's some type of a disability, whether it's some type of a, another type of protected use class of an individual, and you want to make sure that you have the sufficient room within your community to provide those things. One of the other interesting things about this bill is that there's some new affordable housing definitions that we will want to take a look at with our partner's Arch to make sure that we are in sync. We do have an existing affordable housing definition, but we just want to make sure we're consistent with it. One of the other things that Mike, Director Cotterman kind of identified a little bit, there was a bunch of housing density provisions about where to put things like duplexes and things like that. Those are optional, but we still will want to take a look at that and see if there's some, some opportunity for us to implement those things, perhaps in conjunction with an affordable housing provision, because I think this has a lot of provisions within that. And of course, there are some accessory dwelling unit standards that we may want to take a look at that may be a little bit different than what our current standards are, so we'll want to review those. And our, we don't have a policy decision questions quite yet, but we do have a desire to bring that back to the commission to talk about them, yes.
So I just want to add to that, so these are relatively new items, and we've been tracking this as I was going through the legislature. We're looking at these, we wanted to bring them to your attention, where those, there are things that are consistent with our existing policy, and we think they're fairly simple that we can include in housekeeping, then we would include those this year. They would be in addition to what's already in the docket that the council approved, but we want to make sure they're minor enough that they're not gonna take up a lot of additional time to do. If it starts to look like these are things that are gonna have some more policy discussion to them, then we would probably defer those until next year's docket with the council. But we wanted to at least bring them to your attention tonight, we're just not sure which ones we'll be including yet.
Thank you for, for that.
So that's it. So questions and discussions from the planning commission, so thank you.
Great. I think what we should do, I think, is just kind of head through and just do it, if it's okay, letter by letter, just start at the top. I think it'd keep the questions, maybe just kind of move it along more concise, and you guys would be able to track them easier. So let's just start with the A, to clarify whether PED clustering provisions can be applied to multifamily.
Thanks, Bruce, for the presentation. Quick question on this one, I thought you brought up a good point, Director Cotterman, about trying to decouple what might be a policy change from otherwise simple code amendments, which we're just looking at conformity or uniformity within our code. This one, it seems like we can go lots of different directions, and I don't see that this is a slam dunk that we solve in one or two meetings. I mean, we could look at low income, like you mentioned, or other bonuses. Is that one that we can decouple from the rest of them, or does it need to stay part of?
We could decouple any of these as we go along. I think this, this is included in the docket that the council approved. So our original approach, I don't think we had really considered the possibility of including affordable housing, for example, as part of that discussion. What we're proposing is that we, that we move forward with this, that we have that discussion, and if it looks like we can include that, and the commission can make a recommendation that would include a policy recommendation in this, in this case, it doesn't require a complant amendment, I don't believe, so we're okay there, then we would continue to include this in the, in the packet that we would take to the council. If it gets to be a little more complicated, and we feel that, you know, the commission needs more time to work through that, we can decouple it and then continue it either this year, or continue it on into next year.
Okay, because I feel like this one could be fairly complicated. Like, when we were talking about the wavefinding signs through Bothell, there's some public open space in the center of a multifamily development that most people never know and doesn't, you know, doesn't get to use, so I don't think it's as straight-cut as a single-family development.
I can see that, too, now, having thought about it. But at the same time, I appreciate the fact that you guys want to kind of include it in the packet, so I don't know what other Commissioners think about, like, breaking it off, or maybe just setting aside more time for it and knowing that it's gonna take more time.
I think my position would be to take more time on it, just because there's a lot of things that could happen that maybe outfall from this, these decisions long-term. I just, I feel like accessibility for the community could be a big component of this, and I just appreciate taking more time to look at it.
I think that's a fair response, though, looking at the schedule, it looks like we have this back-for-study session next month, and then there's gonna be a public hearing on this, and of the other items, many of them seem pretty straightforward, so I think maybe we could see what you brought us next time as far as more in-depth information on this and see where we go from there. No, no reason not to get started if we have time.
I would agree with that. That makes, that makes sense. If we can, we can also at that time break it off if we're, we think it's gonna be too entailed, but tonight, we can, we don't have to make a decision on that, that seems, that seems fair. Okay, great.
So if I could ask a follow-up question on that, then, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So I've heard, in terms of the policy discussion and the issues that you want to, to address through this, one I've heard about is accessibility of whatever open space is created in the multifamily development, if this goes that direction. Certainly, we've introduced the idea of an affordable housing bonus system. Is that okay to include from the commission? I'm seeing nods around the table, so we'll take that as a yes. Are there other policy issues that you want us to bring back to you, either at the next meeting or the one after that, as we work through this? And we're not, we're not married to the schedule right now either, you know, for, as far as the public hearing, that's what we've estimated, but we can push that out if we need to. So either tonight or at the next meeting, if you have some additional policy questions that you would like us to address, we can come prepared then with, with some analysis and discussion of what, what that might entail.
Yeah, that would be great. I know it's, I know the Commissioners here, it'd be, the clustering, getting that mechanism passed was, was huge, and I don't know, I don't know how, if anybody's taken it on yet. There are some people that have taken it, I knew there were a couple developments in, in the, in the works, so that'd be, maybe just like, anyway, you don't need to give us a presentation on it sometime, but that's good to know it's happening, and, yeah, I like the idea of just having the accessible open space, so.
Okay.
And then affordable, and then the affordable and/or low-housing component?
Yeah, I'm always a proponent of trying to get low-income housing as a, you know, as a mechanism in our cities, so I'm definitely for it, I just am cautious that it's gonna be a quick process, but not, not that we shouldn't try, yeah, let's see what comes back next time.
And that's a good point. I think particularly in the affordable housing component, they're gonna be, there's gonna be some analysis that we're gonna have to ask the Arch staff to help us with, and I don't know what their availability and capacity is right now. We're also gonna be working with them on the multifamily tax exemption this year, so this might be something that we can parallel with that, you know, decouple it from this and parallel with that. We'll look at different ways to deal with that, but we'll try to keep it moving if we can, and if, if we can't, we, you know, we can always continue it into next year. I will just add very quickly on the clustering, we've had at least two, I think maybe three applications on the clustering that have been, I think, worked pretty successfully so far for the single family. The other thing I was gonna note is, I had a conversation a couple of weeks ago with a representative from the Master Builders Association, they were one of the prime proponents for the House Bill 1923. One of the optional provisions in that bill was for clustering, and they took that directly from Bothell, so we were the model that they were using for that, which I thought was kind of cool.
That is very cool. So with regards to that, yeah, and if, if you're, if you're a member possibly in the future, just, if, once one of those clustering provisions, or one of the developments happens, it'd be cool to just kind of see it and review it, maybe as a, reports from staff or something like that, just kind of, yeah. Kind of love to see that.
We'll definitely have that for you.
Yeah, I would just agree with, with Chair of Lea on this clustering. Yeah, I would just agree with, with Chair Leet on this clustering amendment. When we went through this initially for the single family zones, we were, we were pretty fired up about it, and to see it go to council and be implemented and see it used now is great. And if we can apply this to multifamily in a way that makes sense for the city and doesn't have unintended consequences, I think, you know, I'd rather do it, you know, sooner than later, because it, it leads to more open space, more trees, more water facilities, all the things listed here, so can't wait to hear about it next time.
You bet.
Great. Let's move on to letter B, the rounding up. Does anybody have any questions or points they want to make on that?
This is one of those ones that I think seems pretty straightforward to just do it. We're not going to go and make a plan amendment to go the other way, so if this makes staff's job easier, let's do that for now, and if we have an attitude where we want to round down in the future, when it's time to make plan amendments, let's, let's have that conversation.
So you're just saying to keep it as it currently is, but to putting the rounding up prohibition in there?
I would, I would add language that explicitly states that rounding up is not allowed.
Okay.
For, for now, and like I said, if people have a change of heart later, it's going to have to come with a plan amendment.
I guess, from my perspective, just working with other jurisdictions in my own job, Bothell is kind of an outlier in that it doesn't allow rounding up, and so it is kind of interesting for this specific jurisdiction, having a different approach than the surrounding jurisdictions. That being said, I don't think that it, it's a make or break policy move right now. I can echo what was said before, that if it's easier on staff right now just to keep language as it is or to include like specific language clarifying the position of the code, then I say go for it.
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Hampton about including language of prohibiting it. All right. Looks like you, you've got enough guidance on that, then? Okay, great. We'll move on then to part C, amending Title XI about the number of days an applicant has, so anybody have any comments on that? Questions?
Is there anywhere else where we have that anomaly of 90 days? I mean, you mentioned that everywhere else in the code, we cannot have an 180-day timeframe. Is this the last remaining?
We believe so, yes. In fact, one of the things we did is we looked, looked at that and just make sure that happened. Yeah, we want to make sure we didn't miss something else, and, you know, when you do those updates, you, okay, we got everything at one, and then you do a search and you say, oops, there's one, so.
I think the, what staff's recommended, the 180 days for application, seems to make sense.
I do have a question, maybe related to this. In complex submittals, such as maybe groundwater monitoring over the course of winter months, if the application is submitted in the summer, that doesn't allow for monitoring over the winter, some other condition that not, needs to be met over the longer period, is that specifically allowed, or is that just on a case-by-case basis?
We hope that that monitoring has happened before they make their application, and, and here's a great example of that. If the application comes in and they have not done that homework, our peer review will probably identify that, and we're going to say, well, we can't go forward with this application, therefore, what are we going to do about these, these, these timeframes? So it is hoped that that has been addressed before the application comes in. Doesn't always, but we hope that happens.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Bruce, because I'm not as familiar with the code, the 180 days, I think there's also provision for an extension if.
There is, yes, yes. So, so if there's a, some special circumstance where the applicant has, you know, and, you know, we, we use it a lot when the, in the economic downturn, okay, yeah, we understand that the banks are not loaning, so we'll give you a little bit extra time, and we do have that option.
Is that frequently used?
It used to be. It hasn't lately, but it used to be, yes.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like we've, 180 days, giving you guidance with regards to that? Okay. And on to D, which regards to deduction of surface water facilities. I have a little question about this one, because to me, I love the idea of LID principles, and I think Carson has a lot of background with regards to this. I don't, but I feel like there's a big difference, at least in my mind, between a, and I don't, maybe I'm not understanding the question, but between a, like a, like a kind of a more of a concrete engineered vault and maybe a bioswale or something like that? So do you kind of know where I'm going with that with regards to, yeah, I feel like one, one justifies that and one maybe does or doesn't, but maybe you comment on that.
Right, and one of the things that has happened is, of course, is that depending upon how much room a development has, they sometimes are forced to use the big vault, and they have to go really deep and they have to make it really large, and there is a certain requirement for that detention. That wouldn't be retention, that would be detention, because it'll eventually go off the site, and, which is not the preferred approach. And one of the things our current surface water manual does is says, you have to demonstrate very clearly that you cannot retain, do some other type of a low-impact development on site before you go to the extreme of that big, huge vault. So that's one of the things we like. One of the things that was kind of interesting is that this is kind of, one of the reasons this came in was we were getting a couple of green PEDs, and our green PEDs talk a lot about, okay, surface water treatments like bioswales and rain gardens within people's yard areas. And we discovered this issue when we were doing those and saying, wait, hold it, those all have to be deducted from the lottery, and it just basically blew apart the project. So we did the plan and code amendments that are everywhere within the code except for this location, and it was just one of those things, again, where we missed this particular site, where we had that citation. So it, the plan currently does not deduct surface water facilities, so technically you could say this is inconsistent with our current conference plan right now. But I take your point well, because we would prefer those more open-to-the-sky, evapotranspiration things. We'll get a little bit fun here about technicalities, but that is, in many ways, that's a much more appealing visual facility than a big concrete vault.
I think I heard a little different nuance in your question, though, so, and correct me if I'm wrong, are you asking whether this should apply to all surface water facilities or just those that are LID-type surface water facilities? Is that, is that more of the question?
Yeah, yes, but, but, or I guess it's more of a, just it's something we should think about as we give our input on it. For me, it was, so.
Because it sounds like the original intent was really for, to encourage more LID.
Right, and so if it's LID, then, then I agree with what staff's bringing.
So we may have to look at the.
But I don't want it to.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think that that's a good way to think to look at.
Does anybody else have any comments on that?
Yeah, I don't know that we're going to change anything, but I agree with you. When I heard this presentation, when we read through it, I had the same exact reaction, like a concrete vault kind of doesn't do the whole purpose of like a bioswale or keeping the water and, you know, getting it to the ground source right on the site versus just attaining it and tying into the stormwater system. So I, I agreed with, I guess, my interpretation, but if it's consistent everywhere else but here, I don't know.
Some of the issue with that, and Commissioner Curt will say, wait, time out, guys, is that there are sites where you cannot do that open type upon, the soil just won't accept it, and that's where, and unfortunately, the city of Bothell is full of that type of soil condition, because we'd all rather have a retained system where the water does not leave the site, it goes into the groundwater system, and, and you don't have to ship it up into, into a surface water facility at some point. But I, I think that I wanted to spend a little bit more time on thinking about some of the provisions we could apply. There is a term for the more bio-friendly type surface water detention facility that I'm hearing here, and I can't recall what it is off the top of my head, but I'll research again and take a look at that. Do you know, do you remember? Well.
Is it a treatment facility, like?
It is a treatment facility, yes, and they had, there's a classification that they've got for those, and I'm trying to remember what those. It's, well, it's, we adopted the King County manual, but use similar language. I'll, no, I'll, I'll look it up.
Thanks, Bruce. Okay. All right, and then we'll move on to E, clarification of sub area descriptions for North Creek. Feel free to just jump in, the study session's here.
Yeah, a quick question, Bruce, is, are we really looking at one area that's left out of A and B? It's those, I can't remember what they're called. When I lived there, it was called Archstone Apartments down there.
And that's, that's the one.
Okay. So are you, are you looking at us to bring that in line with either A or B, recommended B, or to change the way that we?
Yeah, and we, we should call it, is included that area within Sub District B.
Okay.
As in, and Sub District B, usually the surf, the, the building heights and the setbacks are pretty much code compliant, except for this Sub District B where they have a little bit more height, but we want to basically include that within here, and as you identified, it's all developed anyway.
So it seems pretty straightforward to me, unless we want to reinvent the wheel.
Well, that was another option, is just to eliminate the sub districts and just go with the, the sub-area designation of North Creek 195th.
From, from a staff perspective and administrative, you know, I guess administrative perspective, what would that, the advantage and disadvantage of that be?
It's always better not to have a sub district within your, just sub districts within your sub districts. But there is some utility to those, because there are a couple of special height provisions that we'd have to come up with a negotiated term, but we could do that easily. So I, I think that if we were to decide, if the commission said, yeah, go ahead and explore the concept of removing those sub districts in their entirety, I think your staff would be saying, oh, thank you, one less funny thing in the code that we have to take care of.
We're planners, we're masters of complexity.
We are.
I, I think I would be open to looking at both ways and making a determination. I mean, if it makes things easier and doesn't, doesn't have unintended consequences, let's, let's do it.
Does making these changes before the comp update, does that make a big difference ahead of the game, or would it really not?
No, fortunately, the conference of plan does not talk about the sub districts very much, but I'll, I'll take another look at that to make sure we don't have some conflict there. When I first looked at it, I said, oh, well, it doesn't seem to be a conflict here, but I'll, I'll, I'll double-check that for you. Thank you. That's a good idea.
It is just interesting that they were back in the eighties, I guess it was, mid-eighties, that it was created then, so just as long as we're not kind of like changing, as long as we're, yeah, so it's worth, I'm also okay with looking into that.
All right.
Provision. All right. Moving on to F, with regards to sign height. I think what the staff has here makes a lot of sense, everything under potential approaches. Now, are you, on the potential approaches, are you one and two? Like, do both those things have a picture and a, I'm a visual person, so I, I think that's, that makes some sense, too, just to throw a picture in there.
Yes, either or both.
And we say finish grade, so I'm not a developer or anything, but if they finish grade on a property, what if you mound up the soil and then you put a sign, you know, you like give some landscaping, whatever, and you kind of go up, and then you put a, put the, and then you put the base, and then you put the sign, so how does that work?
That would be the finish.
The finish grade, the mounding?
We would have to approve that, but yes.
If the city approved it.
Right.
Yes, so.
Okay.
I, I had a similar question in line with that. How much grading can be done without a grading permit?
Fifty cubic yards.
Okay, so they could create a pretty significant mound if they wanted to. I'm just trying to think of unintended consequences and then.
Would you rather see language like predominant finish grade, so they couldn't do that little short?
Oh, yeah. I think that might make some sense, because they don't have to go six, they could, it could be four, right, on, if your, your landscaping goes up a bit and then.
Wouldn't we catch that when we?
We, we should, we almost always do, but I'm just, in case there's a desire to.
And I guess my question is, if we introduce a new term, is that going to further confuse things?
It'd just make it more complex, which we like. Sorry, sorry. No, yeah.
Isn't that what we're trying to do here, to make it more complex?
Usually, you know, the effort to put that extra little mound is not necessarily all that worthwhile to the building owner, because you know what, the sign is only six feet high anyway, and, okay, well, another six inches is going to make all the difference in the world for people seeing my sign or not. It really doesn't happen very often.
But some people do.
Unless it's ten feet, maybe.
I can think of some, I'm not going to say the, the businesses, but I, I've seen examples where the mounding is several feet high and then the sign's on top of that, so. Now, I don't know if they went, I'm trying to think back on how high the sign is, but potentially, I don't know, I kind of like your idea of where you're going with that. Commissioner Hampton?
I, I don't know that I have a problem with it, it's just something that I raised a concern, and I wanted to, to comment that I had the same thought. The, the other comment that I had is, you know, your illustration was really great, the ground was flat, but in a practical application, the ground is not always flat, so would the six feet be from the, the low side or the high side, and how would we deal with that? And, and I'm asking more in a sense that I, I don't want to create a really tough situation for somebody wanting to put a sign that meets our code and then all of a sudden they can't.
Our definitions cover that, so when there's a slope, we, we have a way we calculate the, the average finish grade.
Okay, I drew a picture, so.
There you go.
Because you like pictures, but, okay. I think, I think that's all I.
So I'm hearing one and two with some additional analysis of how we might address the mounding, the, prior to the, the sign installation.
Right, I guess to answer the question that you, you asked specifically, is I would support language that included the base of the foundation in the sign height to help make it easier for people to understand what's allowed and acceptable, and then we can just look at those couple little issues on the side.
Okay.
Thanks.
Got it.
Great. Okay, let's move on to G, detached condominium units. Now, just, Bruce, I heard you talk, I think when you were giving your presentation, so you said this happens a lot in 5400A? So I thought that A stood for attached.
It does.
Okay, but these aren't.
No, and within the code, attached allows you can do either.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, so it, it's a, it's one of our more flexible zones within the city.
That's right.
Although you could do detached condominiums within R4,000 or even R2,800, there's nothing that says you can't do this housing product within even a fairly dense multifamily residential zone.
And, and one thing I want to add to Bruce's presentation on this is, he talked about the cube, and in most cases, that's how it's been done. What we're hearing now from developers, and this has to do with the financing of the, the units for people that are going in to buy them, the banks prefer that they own the land, excuse me, underneath the unit, so it's not a subdivision, it's, it's a different kind of animal, but there is still, it's still a condominium, because there's, most of the area is still owned in common, but they do own that piece of dirt right underneath the, the unit.
Who did? Not in this.
The individual, the individual homeowner.
Not in that example, though, right?
Yeah, well, and, and here's the situation, this cube can go right to the ground surface or a little bit below the ground surface as well, so, yeah, it just depends on how it's described. Anyway, yeah, so there's lots of different.
It's an unusual animal, one I've not come across until I got here.
On, on, on part one there, is this the whole totality of amend the code by inserting the, because it goes to however, unless, and then, I don't understand this.
I had the same question. That should be deleted, however, unless a company's.
Yeah, sorry.
Is extraneous language that should be deleted.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
Oh, no problem.
It should be legal, common ownership, blah, blah, of the, of the RCW, yes. Apologies.
No problem.
The proofreader didn't do a very good job on this. I'll do, I'll do better next time.
It was. It was me unfortunately, that was my turn.
God, I'm not doing it. Maybe else, I'm okay with what staff's guidance is here.
Yeah, would it be fair to say that this potential amended code language wouldn't change anything? It would just clarify what's currently happening and make things easier for people to understand?
That's the intent of it, yes.
Okay. It's hard to understand as it is, so I'm almost like, let's do it, but.
I'm okay with what we have here.
So approach number one?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, thanks. All right, H. Structures and practices. Now, this is.
You might want a little time to think about this.
Yes.
Yeah, so about talking about decoupling, but we don't necessarily have, we can just, do you want to just kind of go through it really quickly? Or does any commissioners just go ahead and chime in? We don't have to do it in order, I guess. If there are specific things that jumped out at you.
Will you talk more philosophically about how much more do you want to involve other boards and commissions? How much do you want to keep, you know, more specific? Sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead. I, I mean, in all honesty, I read this packet today for the first time and so I haven't had a ton of time to, to put thought into which types of amendments would be reviewed by which commissions and how that would go. But as far as formatting of this, to me, and, and I might have counted wrong, it looks like there's, you know, A through F as far as different scenarios and F, G and H, and I just kind of went through and how many different types of recommendation processes there would be? And most of them would be planning commission, recommendation to council, or planning commission with collaborating with, sorry, collaborating with shorelines to council. And so maybe if, if type of amendment was, you know, siloed in, in the seven or six different types? Because, for example, Title 20, Title 21 and Title 22, those processes are completely different than any of the other ones above it. It might make it easier for people to understand. I, I, like I said, I don't have a thought on how we should change the actual recommendation procedure today, but I think we'll take some time and think about it and then look forward to thoughts from the other commissioners. Does that make sense when I'm?
I agree, yes, and one of the things that, about this table is that, as you identified, there's some real funny nuances about it that certainly we need to clean up the table. I, I agree with you on that one, that's for sure.
And with regards to the shorelines board, you were saying with regards to a lot, a lot of things that they have in here, I think, you know, they, it could probably be removed. Now, I say that, we have a pretty good knowledge base on the shorelines board from what I've attended and what they've talked about. So almost, maybe I would be requesting that they, and I don't know how this works with regards to how, you know, if they're meeting or if they're not and when they will use them, but I almost think with almost under like natural environment element or conservation element, I, I don't know if it, I feel like it'd be, it might be helpful or not for planning commission to have kind of maybe some type of assistance on that front.
Yeah, and I think you're really actually correct in that. I think there are definitely elements, we want the shoreline board and the planning commission to have that collaboration. It's just a matter of every single one of these things that we have to do that on. And so, you know, that'd be something that we'll just want to have a little, we, we can do a little bit more thought process on that one. Interesting enough, we have a couple of elements that are missing from this table. One is our shorelines element.
I was gonna ask about that.
And the other is our parks and recreation element, so we have to add the, amend the table in any event, so.
Okay.
Oh, it's there, I'm sorry, my apologies, but it doesn't include the parks board.
Correct.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, that, that was my intention, so.
Wait.
It does.
Wait, it did say parks somewhere, Parks and Rec Board under Parks and Recreation Element? Or were you talking about something else?
And, and I guess maybe in some ways it, you know, in, in, on that one, maybe it should be the parks board that is the lead and then they collaborate with others. And it just depends on how you want to approach that type of discussion point.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. That was your recommendation, I think, potential approach number two? And that, that definitely makes sense. So I think what you have outlined to me, trying to condense this a little bit and get rid of redundancy, anywhere we can would be a good approach as a first, first pass.
So just one thing I would offer to, for you to think about as you're looking at this and contemplating some potential changes to it is the, the planning commission has the primary responsibility for the comprehensive plan. So ultimately, it is your, your document that you're, you're sending to the city council. That's not to say others shouldn't be involved in it because I think that's an important aspect of the whole process. What should that role be? So it may be that we define the role a little differently or a little better as well, but ultimately, you're responsible for making sure that the entire document is consistent internally and externally and also consistent with our code. So that's why you're also involved in a lot of the code work that implements the comprehensive plan. So that's just a little bit more to, to think about as, as you look at these and contemplate.
Yeah, and for that reason, I think that your recommendation number three, which is kind of removing the planning commission from looking at the transportation, kind of the highly technical, specific issues, maybe it should still fall under the planning commission purview in this chart.
Right, and of course, and, and certainly the natural provision we want to do is that the transportation element definitely needs to be with the planning commission. There's no doubt about it, and maybe that linkage is continued, is, is still important that you have a look at that regulation as well, so. I mean, I, I think that's fair.
I, I agree with Commissioner Kabe's comment on that. I, I made a note on that for 15, 17 and 18 that if, if we do consider recommendation three, that, that you bring a little bit more detail, and I didn't have time to dig into what exactly is in 17, but it seems like transportation and land use are, are pretty tied together.
They are.
So if, if we look at recommendation three, I'd like to see a little bit more about what's in 17, and I can do that on my own, but. The other question for Chair of Lead, your comment about the shorelines board review, and, and can you clarify, are you saying that if we recommend action, are you, some of our actions go to the shoreline board for review even if those actions are outside of the shoreline jurisdiction or only for actions in the shoreline jurisdiction?
I don't know, it was kind of a comment, it was, I'm not looking, I, I would maybe use some guidance from the shorelines board, but you're right, I guess, I guess their purview is just within the, the shoreline, so. So I guess that would be broken out separately and within the natural environment element, we'd be addressing everything as well as their sub area, so. I don't know, just as long as we can, I, I didn't know what the intention was of using the shoreline board in the future, but I know they have a, a lot of knowledge and history with the town and it seems like they, they would, even though it's not maybe actually in the shorelines jurisdiction, they, they might be able to give some good information with regards to the natural environment element. But it wasn't to hand, to basically, I guess, hand over our responsibility for giving the recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
More of informational or, you know. I don't know how that would work, but, kind of brainstorming. Let's see, and just like, in reference, like under the historic, maybe, maybe this was captured in what you said, but basically in the historic preservation element? I mean, I don't, I don't even know, it seems like, I don't know if that would be, seems like that should just come from the landmark board, but maybe, but maybe, oh, but maybe not because zoning and there's all kinds of other things involved.
Yeah, and I think in that case, I think maybe, and that's where maybe we can change the lead, okay? The lead perhaps should be the landmark preservation board with collaboration with the planning commission. And, you know, I'm just thinking along those lines, okay, because, you know, they, as you identified, the shoreline board, landmark preservation board are experts on the historic resources within the community and makes sense for them to be the primary lead.
So I think that's one of the things to think about is if, if you do want these others to be the lead, then, or do you want their, their advice and input on a recommendation that you're gonna make to the, to the city council? And, and I'm not advocating one way or the other on that, but I think it's an important consideration because if you're, if you're asking another board or commission to be the lead on something, then in essence, you're saying that you will defer to their, their recommendation to you. It's not to say you can't change it, but there's more deference involved in that type of a situation typically. And again, I'm not saying that's good or bad, just it's more to think about.
No, definitely, it's something I definitely have to think about.
I feel like from there, I understand that the other boards do have a lot of, they have a lot more knowledge base like you had mentioned, but keeping things consistent in recommendations towards council is important. And I think that's kind of the, what I like about planning commission is that it is kind of making sure that everything funnels down and it's consistent across the boards that we present a unified vision to the council.
Great, excellent point. Okay, with that, I guess we'll conclude the first study session and we'll move on to the second one. There's still nobody in the audience, public comment. So we'll go into the Canyon Park Land Use Alternatives led by Bruce Blackburn once more.
Just gonna make one more note here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make one more comment about the, the format for the last study session? I really appreciated the way that you laid everything out and then you gave us the kind of preferred recommendations. It made it easy for us to understand what you're looking for.
Oh, thank you.
And so if that was a test, you passed.
That was, that's a very excellent point.
Thank you for that comment, Commissioner Hampton. That's something we've been working on to try to provide clearer questions and what, what we're asking for from the planning commission, so I appreciate that.
It shows, so good work.
Thank you. Now on to something a little more interesting. Yeah, it's good, but still, this is, this is, this is really interesting, of course. Uh-oh, yes, this, of course, is the Canyon Park Sub Area Plan Update, and we just had a very similar briefing before the plank, uh, pardon, pardon. City Council last night, I've been doing this too often, and basically I just want to identify, of course, we did 2017 and 2018 and created a vision with a bunch of stakeholders out there, and these are just the primary items that are identified. Continue to be an economic driver, a multifaceted neighborhood, connected to the natural environment and a transportation hub. You've already heard this before a few times. Just want to identify the progress we're making on this plan and, and while a lot of it is kind of behind the scenes, we actually have had a lot of public engagement and we're right here. So you can see there's been a lot of technical analysis done and we're getting into some more public engagement opportunities in the future. So it's gonna be, continue to be very exciting here. We talked a little bit about the survey results and I just want to make sure I, I updated you folks. We got 333 responses to the online survey we did, which in our mind is just phenomenal. And you, you know, I think we talked about, okay, if 6%, almost 6% live within the Canyon Park area. And of course, it's interesting because we were talking about Canyon Park and Canyon Park's a pretty big area, larger than we think it is because it goes beyond our boundary quite a bit. But again, this is the, this is a very important geographic distribution of the living folks out there, and then we look where people work, look at how much further it is. So people still travel a long ways away to get to their work aspect. It'd be great if we had this look like this, but that's something we're gonna work on in the future. And, you know, and of course, 20% of the folks work in the Canyon Park area, 84% shop, so it is continuing to be a very important retail area for the city. And of course, 30% own property, so that, that's really exciting to see that their participation. This is, of course, the vision map that we did in 2018 and the question was, okay, is it still viable? And the responses was 44% yes, 36% unsure. So I think the idea is that maybe this is a little bit of, okay, what does this mean? We're not sure we got it. But if the people said they didn't think it was, whoops, sorry, they didn't think it was, we asked them what it was, what was their concern and it was traffic has gotten worse. So that is a really key component. As we go through that, you're gonna see this theme a lot of times. Top concerns, traffic congestion on arterials, traffic congestion on side streets. And then we get a little bit smaller input from the lack of safe and comfortable places to walk, school overcrowding, lack of affordable housing, that's important, lack of parks or neighborhood focal point. And this is something that we found very interesting and intriguing, particularly our parks folks, they're really excited about that one. Some of the concerns is lack of retail options and loss, loss of small area businesses. And that's kind of like that small local business group that we want to retain. And of course, limited transportation options, which are hopefully gonna get fixed in the future. Assets to preserve, this is really fascinating. 84% identified those natural features in that area, we should be preserving those. And that has come through, throughout the entire history of this vision process, is that people really enjoy those features. Particularly where they have, you can see this one, trails, and those two and sometimes are pretty increasingly linked. We have the North Creek Trail and some of the other items, but also they looked at, look at this, employment opportunities preserved, 42%. Small businesses, 42%, preserving those things. So there's a really strong natural features in recreation, but it's also employment, business. We want to continue to have this as an important business area. Investment opportunities, and this is, I'm sorry, priorities, and this is something, again, relieve traffic congestion, 6%. But look at this, new public park. So people are really thinking about how they're gonna use those type of facilities and how they want that park space, open space, all those things to be provided there. Of course, a lot of people are talking about complete the pedestrian network, which is really a key, important. Improved transit, add more restaurants and amenities came in very strongly at 19%. So it's really fascinating when you get, and 333 responses is really awesome. I don't think any of opportunities I've done in the last 30 years have gotten anywhere near that many, so it, it was very, really exciting. And of course, our primary message was social media, Instagram, Facebook, those really helped out a lot. So thank you very much to our former PIO who has gone on, but we're gonna be doing more of that stuff. I need to talk a little bit about some numbers here, and this is activity units, and this is something that's really important that we understand as we go through this process. The Pius Town Regional Council or PSRC has some regional growth center framework provisions that were just passed last year. And essentially what they do is they have certain mandates that have to be followed, including existing AUs. And when I say AU, that's an activity unit. An activity unit can be one resident or one employee, either way. So 10, five residents and five employees is 10 AUs or activity units. So the existing RGC should have 18 per acre. If you go over here, we have a 733 acre RGC. We have right now 12,600 existing AUs within our RGC. The planned AU should be 45 per acre. That's what you should be able to accommodate within your comprehensive plan. And if you go over here, whoops, sorry. If you go over here, you can see that adds up to 33,000 planned activity units. That's both the residents and employees, employees, so that's a pretty good sized number. Basically, what that means is we have to have another 20,000 some odd people into this regional growth center at 733 acres. We also have to complete, comply with our Stonemish County growth targets. And within this area, we've identified within our comp plan that we can accommodate 4,500 new people. We have to make sure and meet that number because that's also part of our growth target. We have to make sure we have our population figure entered. But what happens if you have a smaller regional growth center, and this example is like 613 acres? All of a sudden, you start seeing these numbers change a little bit. Now, within that area, we have 11,300 existing activity units, but instead of 33,000, 27,000 is what you really need to, in your planned provision, which is 15,000 more, not 20,000 more. So, and this is.
Sorry Bruce, so just can you explain this reduction in size acreage?
I will in just a moment. In fact, we're about to hand out some documents here for you. And this, this is just a table showing you a little bit more. Primarily what I want you to do is look at this table here that talks about the activity units that we have, and this applies it to the number per acre. And that's basically the current number we have for activity units per gross acres, it's 17. And our activity units is planned for 28, so you can see we are still short. This map here shows a number of features, including the current regional growth center boundaries, the sub area plan, as well as some, the study area. The study area is a little bit larger than that. One of the features that we need to identify to the commission, we did this last night to the council, is that sound transit is going forward with the acquisition of this property to be used as a bus barn. That's 12 and a half acres. That will be removed from our ability to have activity units. So that's gonna be something we're gonna have to have. So that's going to be something we're going to have to have discussions about later on. And this just goes in a little bit more detail about the activity units needed underneath the current RGC boundary. And this basically just kind of goes through those numbers, you know, fairly quickly, a little more detail. But basically, you basically can see that we're talking about 33,000. And depend upon how you calculate that, if you look at what our, our numbers is for our current capacity, and if you start going to the nets, we're talking about that. One of the things that I want to make sure we understand is that we have not applied a market factor to this yet. And that's one of the things that we have to do underneath our buildable lands analysis. And that's a 15 to a 30% market factor. That will make these numbers bigger, but basically what that says is that when we do our buildable lands, we have the market factor because there are certain properties that just won't develop in the course of your lifetime of your plan. You know, the 20-year lifetime of a plan. And that ranges depending upon the type of zoning you have and the type of land use and some of the other factors. So one of the things that we'll have to be doing as we do this is we're going to start applying those, those market factors. We haven't done it yet, we're still working on that a little bit. And this is, of course, the potential revised RGC boundary. And I'm just going to go right to this map right here because you're interested in it. That's you, before you have two maps here. And one is a live work and the other is called Business Park Plus or something like that. Basically what these are, these are land use alternatives that our consultant has identified for us. And essentially what these are, these are kind of considered like bookends that will be analyzed in our environmental impact process. Basically, we'll identify, so we can understand what the difference is between the two types of mixture of uses and well as activity units. Live work has about 32% population and 68% jobs. Business plus is basically 20% population and 18, and 80% jobs. Again, the overall impression we have receiving from our community is that they really want to keep that jobs number high. And so it's a natural feature for us to go ahead and reflect that within our analysis we're talking about. One of the things you can see here is that this new line in the dashed would be the new regional growth center boundary. And of course, the council immediately saw this, well, you're removing the wetlands and some of the other areas that you just can't build upon. That's land that if you can't build upon, why is it included in our regional growth center? It just drags down our AU numbers. So this is basically the revised about 613, 615 acre area that, that basically is the focus of what we want to look, go, look at going forward. One of the other features you're going to look in this map, you see the little numbers here that basically what the consultant has done is segregated this into blocks. And that's not the correct, a great term, but basically just different areas in which we want to do a little bit more detailed analysis. The, the, the big thing there. Yeah, I'm not going to call them subdiscretes, no indeed, that's a good question. One of the other things you're going to look at is you're going to see little yellow circles and little red circles. Those are activity units in 100 person increments. And you see how they're stacked up within the different blocks. That's the kind of, of activity level, level, that, activity unit level that we're going to be looking at achieving within this, this project. The other thing the applicant, the consultant has done is he's looked at some of the retail intensity areas, trying to, you know, predict in the future where the logical retail areas are. And you can see, you know, some of them are very natural. Of course, they've got a lot of retail already, so that's a natural area. But also we've got some areas that have no retail now that seem to be a really good location to include some retail. Some are not quite as strong, others really strong. So these are all things within those two maps. And of course, I jumped quite a bit ahead in my presentation, but you guys were fired up to see this. So I thought I'd just go ahead and shoot forward a little bit. This is the real heart of the analysis so far that we're doing for our environmental impacts. And this is, you know, pretty close to what we're doing. And I mean, we're still gathering some information, the council had some good discussion last night. I'm hoping we'll have some more good discussion, discussion tonight. And we can do some little bit refinements on these, these elements. So the maps are a little bit easier to read than this, of course. But this is pretty fun stuff to work on from our standpoint. And I kind of, I kind of jumped ahead, you know, the transportation news, okay, well, you know, deputy director, deputy mayor, doer, identified the new express toll lanes that are coming in with, including the off ramp. Sound Transit is on BRT and of course, the Sound Transit acquisition of 12 and a half acres within the RGC is something that we're going to have to work on. And of course, as we all know, the green line, the Green Swift line from Community Transit is in effect now, a really fun ride. And this is a couple of the real key points here. And this is a kind of a visual depiction, if you would, of that, that express toll lane off ramp directly into the park. This is really important because this serves not just the park, but the transit facilities. And we've got two transit agencies that are going to be here really heavy duty. Of course, Sound Transit and Community Transit, both are going to be looking at this area as one of their key areas. So it's really important that this project go through and the legislature and our city council came through for us, big time stuff. I just wanted to mention the open house we had, you may recognize a couple of faces in these photos. Really well attended. And basically, it was really fun to watch people start putting in blocks. Okay, what do you think makes a lot of sense here? Well, we think this and what do you think that? And we did a lot of talking to, to folks about many different topics. And this was an exercise that kind of helped us solidify what those concept would be. And one of the things the consultant did is they refined that. They actually went back to their offices and started duplicating some of the things they heard and starting to, starting to put some of these unit activities within there, as well as thinking about in the future, what really good urban design elements they could apply. So that ended up here. So next steps, as you've heard about, we have 100, $400,000 funding coming our way. That's going to let us do a whole lot. Basically, we're going to complete this project within, by 2020 sometime, maybe earlier, maybe later. But you can see this kind of, this darker blue are the activities we're operating underneath this first phase. And that was about a $230,000 first phase we were working on that we got some money from the state legislature through Cascadia College. And as a matter of fact, the red color, supposed to be red, are the things we can do with that. It looks green, doesn't it? A little bit, but I was sure I picked red. Anyway, I was, this is a late night thing I was doing. So this is all the activities we're going to be doing with this $400,000. That, I mean, preferred alternative, final planned action, environmental impact statement, public engagement, a lot of public engagement. We're going to do a lot more. Interestingly enough, as, as the commission is where we have some roads out there that are private. And one of the elements we have to have, we have to have a discussion about those becoming public roads eventually. And, and we actually have already had that discussion with the owners out there. But, you know, some more market analysis, capital facilities, all kinds of really important features that we will do. So when we get to the end of 2020 or sometime in 2020, maybe beginning of 2020, who knows? We will have these, this plan done. And then it's just a matter of implementing the, the, the activity and watching the area grow in the future. So thank you. If you have questions or comments or other fun topics of discussion, please blast them away. Thank you.
Thanks Bruce. Couple of questions. Do you think some of these figures are conservative or do you think that they're aggressive? The reason I bring it up is the QFC development, they predict, I think, 1,000 residential units. And that's a lot. I don't, I don't, I don't know what Six Oaks is, but I've worked on apartment buildings and that's a, that's a ton of people.
Now remember, this is a 20-year projection. So the idea is that, yeah, it may not be feasible in the next five years, it may not be feasible in the next 15 years. But in 20 years, they really could see this. And remember the presentation we had on the Vision 2050 update, where we are looking at a number of, a bunch of units? There is a very strong prediction for a lot of growth happening within this, within this area. Whether it'll happen exactly this way or some other form will be one of the things that we want to talk about as we do the development of the plan, because we can say, okay, here is the style of building we want. And here is the uses allowed there. Here's the minimum amount we have to have. And we're going to have to have some kind of minimums to make sure we meet our AU numbers. But as you identified, it might take us 28 years, maybe even longer.
And keep in mind, part of the purpose of this is make, excuse me, being able to demonstrate to PSRC that we can accommodate all of that growth. It doesn't mean that it's necessarily going to happen within that timeframe. What we've seen in actuality is in some places, we end up with more than what we had planned for, which happens sometimes. And other times, we planned for it, but it didn't all arrive within that 20-year horizon. So, and as Bruce said, it may not happen exactly like we've shown it here, but we at least have to demonstrate that we can accommodate it. The other piece of it that I wanted to highlight, Bruce mentioned in the, with the additional funding from the state, one of the things that we'll do that PSRC is looking for is a market analysis. That'll give us a sort of a reality check, if you will, about what we're proposing in terms of the types of uses and some of the level of development that we're talking about. And just if the market isn't there right now, what, what would it take? Or what's the likelihood that the market will be there within the planning horizon?
Okay, that makes sense. I like the idea of trying to have everything a north downtown would need kind of contained on site. So a park or retail options. I mean, like we talked about, has there been any further discussion about a connector bus between downtown and Canyon Park in the future? I mean, we talked about this years ago. And with UW kind of expanding, it seems like it might make sense to share resources that we already have within our city.
Well, something that the city has just begun on, they have just begun the design phase for the 522, I'm sorry, 527 connection or Bothell Everett Highway connection from our downtown area up to the, oh shoot, what is that? Where it becomes just, just north of Country Village or south of Country Village. The Red Barn District, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so there is a, the, the city has embarked upon a design. Yeah, roadway design to do exactly what you're after. Because the ultimate concept for Swift Green Line is to come into the downtown area.
Okay, good. And then I do like the reduction of acreage to represent what we actually build on and not taking into account all the wetlands. That, that wouldn't make sense. And then just my general thought, I think if I were to look at these three or four years ago, I definitely would have sided on the left. I was excited about getting some mixed use developments and more residential units within this area. But learning and experiencing how great our economic center is in that area, I agree with the comments that you brought up, that protecting those jobs and finding that balance between, you know, adding this new development type, I think is going to be key, so.
Yes. Now, these are kind of intended to be bookends, you know, okay, one end and the other. And someplace in between is probably where we end up after we have a lot of more engagement and discussion with the commission and the council. So, but these are just kind of some, some interesting things. And, and as you identified, jobs and employment was really important. That's come through quite a bit in this process.
Thanks again for that presentation Bruce. I'm looking at the map, one, one thing else, and thanks for these maps. So the district, I'm not super familiar with that area over there, but the part eight there, I noticed that it doesn't have, it doesn't have any increase in employment projected, or at least not 100 people. So is that, it seems kind of interesting to me, I would think.
And, and you know what, there's a couple of really important reasons for that. One is that this area is, that area up there on the hillside, we'll call it. One is it's pretty new stuff. And so the redevelopment opportunities are not as great as they are in some of the other areas where we have buildings that are about 10 to 15 years older. The other is that it's a long ways from our transit facility and it's up on the hillside. And probably the more intense development we want to occur is in this area close to that transit facility. We want to make sure that we have the ability to do more multimodal type of, you know, movement. So more bikes, more pedestrians, more of that, more transit facilities. It's tough to get up on that hillside with your transit facility.
So why would the live work one then have more employment gain?
Primarily what, whoops, sorry. Primarily what's happening here is that there's kind of a balance between trying to get some of these, again, it's activity units, we're trying to achieve. So if you're going to do a few less activity units, because you probably can't get quite as many residential activity units in the same space as you can employment activity units. So you have to start spreading it out a little bit. And that's where that comes, I'm sorry, that's where that comes into, into, into play. One of the things that we're going to do is here is that we're going to have a full presentation before the commission with our consultants and they can kind of go through some of the details and some of the thoughts on it. And part of it was what we received at the open house and, and some of the other engagement opportunities. Anyway, it's, it's a good question.
And one question with regards to, so business BNO taxes. So just something that I want to better understand, I don't know if you guys can comment to it. So when we get a new business, obviously we get, you know, or the ones we already have and they expand, how does that help our, I mean, it's maybe this is too much of a, this is a long-winded question or at least the explanation for it would be. But what, are we getting more tax revenue from, say, a business staying locally or a resident staying locally? Or not a resident staying locally, or having more of a residential component? Does, does the city benefit more one way than the other?
I can tell you from my experience with annexations and the analysis, the fiscal analysis that's done of those, is residential typically does not pay for itself in terms of the taxes collected and the services provided. As far as, you know, actual dollar amounts, do we collect more? I, I don't have a good answer for that. Anytime though, I, I think, you know, most jurisdictions focus on economic development is one aspect of their, their programs. And a lot of that is because you want to provide a good job base, employment base. That also provides a good fiscal base for, for the municipality. When a business expands or when a business moves into an area, even if there's not a, say, a BNO tax, there's a multiplier effect of those jobs being in that community because you have more employees than purchasing things at the retail stores and the restaurants and, and those types of things, or buying housing in that community. So the multiplier effect is very important, you know, tax structure aside. And then the value of the property itself. Commercial property is typically valued higher than residential property.
Thanks Michael.
Piggybacking off of that question. This might be addressed during the market analysis, but during seasons of economic downturn, I would imagine that job growth stagnation could lead to a lot of the job centers regionally becoming a little bit more depressed in terms of the development opportunities. Whereas because we're in a housing shortage right now, I feel like adding any amount of residential capacity would be worthwhile. Is that reasonable or is that market analysis or?
No, it's a great question. And one of the things that we're taking a very close look at is what residential is currently allowed. Because the RAC zoning, the Regional Activity Center, did I get that right? Residential Activity Center? Residential Activity Center, thank you. 14 months, I'm still learning all this stuff. It currently covers most of the Canyon Park sub area. And I think almost all of the regional growth center, if not all the regional growth center. So we already allow residential. And frankly, that's one of the concerns that we have because it is there, the market is, there's a much higher demand for that type of development right now. And we're seeing that happen. In fact, we have, if you can point out in there Bruce, where we have approved townhouse development right there. I forget how many units, I want to say it's around 200 or something like that.
139 or something like that, yes.
So in that range, which, we can talk about whether that's an appropriate location for residential, but it is allowed and it is approved and it's going ahead. Then what had been proposed on the, the bus barn site before Sound Transit decided to purchase it is that one, I think, is 320 units?
About 239, I think.
Well, I'm not even close, okay.
Yeah, that's all right.
But townhouses again, and again, not at a density that we would like to see for residential in that area. And that site may, may have been a little more appropriate for residential. Then on the area six that you see there with all the yellow dots, we've had a pre-application so far that for 530 units, that one I'm pretty sure about.
You got it.
Finally got one right. Those are apartments and that, you know, multifamily for that area. And that, you know, that is a pretty high density and that's more in line with what we would like to see there. And in a good location basically for residential. So long answer to your question, the, the market is there for the residential. We're seeing more pressure for that. We're a little concerned about the fact that it can have. We're a little concerned about the fact that it can happen in a lot of these other areas. I think that probably the, the upside of that is there's not a lot of developable land in our Regional Growth Center. And it's not at a point where we're gonna see redevelopment of commercial properties for residential. But you're right, if the commercial became much more depressed and they had vacant buildings occurring up there and they weren't seeing much on the horizon, they'd probably develop it, redevelop it for residential. So we wanna make sure that we put some things in place through this process, that the zoning we put in place is much more specific to where we want the types of uses. So, you know, we're a little bit narrower in what we, what we allow, rather than the full palette of things. So we'd be particular about the types of residential, the densities that we're looking for. Probably have a minimum density in place to make sure that we're not under utilizing land. And to be very clear about where we want to maintain that, the commercial industrial uses that we have there. So, sorry, very long answer to your question.
Perfect, thank you.
Can I add to that? Sorry. One of the other things that we have learned from some of the businesses out there, and this is life science companies, they've identified a concern with having enough space to expand. And the ability for some of the small startups. In fact, one of their, our prime success stories out there, Seattle Genetics, sorry, Seattle Genetics started as a startup out there. And so we don't wanna really lose that. In fact, that's one of the things they've added in, don't lose that. So we wanna have that business orientation out here. It's, it's really important focus.
And I, and I think I may have mentioned this to the commission before. I apologize if I'm repeating myself. But if, from a planning standpoint, I'm just fascinated by this project. It's, it's unique as far as we can tell in that we're taking an existing, successful, well-designed business park that was really intended for, to be an employment center, did not have residential. In fact, it didn't allow residential for a long time. And we're trying to create an urban, mixed-use, livable, walkable community out of that while retaining that, that economic engine that is so vital from the, the businesses that are there. We've looked, we haven't found anyplace else that's done this or is doing this. So I'm, I'm pretty jazzed about that, frankly. Because I think we've got a really good chance to make something exciting happen here.
So I keep wanting to say this is a good start, but as the, the Gantt chart showed you, we've been working on this for a long time. So it's, it's good progress. These maps are great bookends to see kinda what's possible out there. One of the questions I had is, is the conversation about road transference, how is that going? I would assume that they'd wanna get rid of the, the maintenance costs and the liability for those roads? Have, have we run into any roadblocks with that, pun intended?
Yes and no. Yes, from the standpoint that, interestingly enough, the Snoomish County Council, when they approved this back in 1988, actually did require that those roadways be turned over to the county at the time, which is now the city, upon completion of the park. So it's always been envisioned that those roads would be turned over to some governmental agency, become public right-of-way. One of the issues here is that the condition of the roads, and that's maybe the biggest roadblock, if you would, to that transference. And understanding what the roadway prisms, that's the engineering term they use, is as what they are. Basically, the, and that's one of the elements that we actually have had a pretty good start with the Owners Association about that. And understanding what's it gonna take to make these into a type of a roadway that the city would feel comfortable maintaining? And once it's a public right-of-way, the city has to maintain it. So that's a really, that's a really important topic of discussion that we're having right now.
Okay, I have a couple of things here, if you don't mind, sorry. But thank you for that. And then if, if this is more of a, a mixed-use environment where we're co-mingling residential and commercial, not that I have to explain mixed use to you, have we had any conversations about, about shared-use parking to, to help keep cost downs, cost down of development? Where people are living there and they're home in the evenings and weekends, they can share the parking with the, the commercial development?
Not yet, stay tuned.
Okay, but that's part of the, the plan?
We will, yeah.
Yeah, we definitely will, yeah. That is, that's, and one of, one of the things that's, you know, it looks like we've, oh man, we've made all this progress. And a lot of it is just understanding what we have. And a lot of transportation modeling is going on as well. So a lot of that stuff is behind the scenes. But some of the more exciting urban designs things that we're gonna start talking about here pretty quickly.
Okay, so then just two more. One, last week, two weeks ago, you mentioned to accommodate or to accomplish this business park was, we'd have to look at some, you know, heights of buildings that we've never seen in Bothell. I think you maybe even mentioned 12 stories for the commercial. One of the things that I would encourage us to look at is kind of the economics of building development as far as heights. I know that in Bellevue, in some cases, they, they upzoned parts of Main Street to a certain height that didn't really pencil out for the developer. Because once you go beyond a certain height, you have to kinda move to steel construction and concrete. And that increases your costs. And if you can't gain more than one story over the five over one that we see, then, then it doesn't work. The same with underground parking. You know, there's, there's a spot where you have to get into before you can do that. So just something to consider. And I know with Director Kaderman's experience in Bellevue, I'm sure that you're considering that. But wanted to put it on the, the dais here, I guess. And then the last thing, sorry. Block seven looks to be the same site that you identified as the, the operations and maintenance facility for the BRT system. What, is the plan to put residential there related to kinda the requirement for low-income housing with the state legislature mandate of ST3? Or is that a completely separate piece of property?
So what Sound Transit has told us so far is that they would like to work with us. They're, they're recognizing the importance of that 12 and a half acres to our Regional Growth Center and the capacity, future capacity of, of what we need to achieve. They said that they would like to work with us in trying to figure out how to introduce some TOD to that site. Having said that, not being critical of Sound Transit, they've also told us that they need every square inch of that site for the facility that they need to build there. So I, I'm not overly hopeful that we'll be able to get something on the site. But one of the initial thoughts that we've had internally, we haven't had this discussion yet with our counterparts of Sound Transit, is that we might be able, if they can overbuild the amount of office space that they need, that might be a way to introduce some additional activity units to the site that we wouldn't have been able to get with the 200 to 300 employees that they're estimating they would have at that site now. So I don't know that residential would be realistic there. And it wouldn't necessarily qualify for the 80-80-80 provision, if that's what you're referring to, simply because it's probably not gonna be excess property.
Okay.
Yeah, if they did have some excess property, then yes, it would fall under that, I think.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all I have for now. Thanks for all the time.
Those are good, good comments and questions. That's gonna be a lot of bus trips into that area.
20 buses.
120 buses. Okay. Oh, I have one more question, I forgot what it was. Must have not been that important. Well, thank you very much for, thank you very much for that presentation, or both of those presentations, Bruce. Let's see, new old business, any staff reports? It looks like you do have some staff reports.
Just a couple. So one, we wanted to ask you about the July 3 meeting. We've had two commissioners indicate so far that they would not be present at that meeting. We, we're not in danger of losing a quorum or anything like that. But it is the day before a holiday and it's, you know, the Wednesday before a Thursday holiday and a Friday that probably everybody's gonna take off. And if people are looking at a five-day weekend instead of a four-day weekend, we're wondering if that's something, if you just wanna cancel that meeting now and we can take it off the calendar. So if that's your preference, we can certainly do that. We've looked at our, our work program. At this point, we don't think that will be a factor or a concern as far as what we have planned to bring to the commission. If it is, we can look at scheduling one the following Wednesday on the 10th. And we would just do a 10th and a 17th that month, or a 17th and a 24th. Bruce probably wouldn't do that, but judging by the look on his face. So what's your preference for July 3?
I'd be okay with taking it off the calendar. Or, but, but in so noting that if we need that, to have the, have it on the 10th.
Okay.
But I don't have, other commissioners? Looks like we're already down two people and so that, that's, getting quorums together, so, yeah, I just wanna make sure that we, if we put that on the calendar, we're not doing kinda what we did this past week, so.
We would like to get the notice out ahead of time. So that people know, when we do the next Imagine Bothell Notice, we would just note that there would not be a meeting on July 3. Because there'll only be one more Imagine Bothell Notice before that, is that right?
I know, Jason, looks like you're not gonna be there anyway, or?
I'm, I'm probably gonna be out.
Okay. Let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and cancel that meeting then. And then, but if the 10th, if we need, and we definitely can be here for that, the 10th, then let's, let's do that.
Okay. I, I think we can work around it with our work program. But if it gets to be an issue, we'll certainly talk to you.
Okay, great. Yeah, please do. Because we're here to serve on the commission, so we need to be available, so.
And then that rolls right into the next one, just meeting attendance update. We will update this to reflect absence and absent and excused for Commissioner Merrill Cook for this evening. He did let us know ahead of time. So this will be not just an upcoming meeting and tracking who has indicated they won't be here, but also a record of who was in attendance. And this is something that we'll provide to the council when they do their next appointments, those types of things. So it's just additional information for them. I do appreciate people responding when I sent out the notice. I only do that when we're down to four, just to make sure that everybody is still gonna be here, that nothing has changed, or that you're not gonna be late so that we know we're not gonna have a quorum at 6 o'clock. And if we're waiting, that we know when you're gonna show up. So I appreciate people responding to that. But that's the only time that we'll be sending that out. Otherwise, we just assume we have a quorum based on what we've been told ahead of time. So thank you for that. The system seems to be working so far, so thank you. The last item that I added to let you know about, and I, I hopefully already know about it because I think some of you have responded, on next Tuesday, from 4:30 to 6, this is before the council meeting, all of the boards and commission members are invited to join the city council for a meet and greet and an artist reception here in the council chambers and in the lobby. So I hope, hope all of you are able to make that. Deputy Mayor, I don't know if you wanna add anything to that?
It just came about, I think it was Councilmember Zorn's. I brought it up when we were discussing, you know, it's been about a year since we tried the council liaison and we had some discussion about what's working, not working. And this is just another opportunity to kinda build the community of our boards and commissions so that when we pass people on the street, we know who they are. It's kind of embarrassing when, when you don't know someone's a board member, right? So it'd be nice to, to kinda build that familiarity, I think, with, with everyone. So that's, that's what it's about. And we're hoping, hoping to do more. So we'd love to see you guys.
And as I understand it, it's just a social event, there's no program or anything like that?
Yep, just an opportunity to kinda shake hands and talk.
And I think there were refreshments.
Yeah, they typically have refreshment, no, I mean cookies at the artist reception, so.
I mean, it's worth coming just to talk to the council members, sir. There's also.
We'll sign autographs, whatever. I'm teasing.
That's all I had, thank you.
Oh, excellent, great. Any member reports? Seeing none, motion to adjourn? Move to adjourn?
I second the motion.
Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, we are adjourned.
Thank you all very much.